Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh-oh, there's a delay. This could really screw us up.
We'll watch it live later. Amanda, will you call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Here.
Trustee Raco?
Here.
Trustee Sheehan?
Here.
Trustee Casera?
Here.
Trustee Lotner?
Here.
Trustee Zora?
Here.
President Disipio?
Here.
Corum Miss President?
Thank you, Amanda. First order of business is a swearing-in ceremony of paid-on-call firefighter Evan Lilly. So special tonight, Evan, that we're doing it live on YouTube just for you. Evan Lilly became a paid-on-call firefighter candidate with our fire department on January 1st, 2017. He grew up in La Grange Park on the 700 block of Spring and attended Ogden Avenue and Park Junior High and Lions Township High School. Evan also grew up with some of the children of our current firefighters. Doesn't that make you guys old, huh? In the spring of 2017, Evan attended and graduated from the Fire Academy held at the Western Springs Fire Department and became a state-certified firefighter. He also attended and successfully completed EMT school at the College of DuPage. Over the last year, Evan has been learning about La Grange Park Fire Department policies, standard operating guidelines, and general operations. Most recently, on October 8th of this year, he has successfully completed his probationary testing, which includes general knowledge of policies, SOGs, apparatus, and equipment, in a practical diving, driving, and pumping test. Therefore, we, the Village of La Grange Park, recommend the swearing-in of Evan Lilly as a paid-on-call firefighter for the Village of La Grange Park. Chief, would you do the honors with Amanda?
(inaudible) I, Evan Lilly.
I, Evan Lilly.
hereby solemnly swear.
hereby solemnly swear.
that I will uphold and defend.
that I will uphold and defend.
the Constitution of the United States of America.
the Constitution of the United States of America.
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
and I will faithfully carry out.
I will faithfully carry out.
all duties imposed upon.
all duties imposed upon.
and entrusted in me.
and entrusted in me.
as firefighter for the Village of La Grange.
as firefighter for the Village of La Grange.
(applause)
As usual, first of all, we want to congratulate Evan. We appreciate him being part of our team, and obviously congratulate him on getting through his probationary period. If, first of all, if you want to introduce your family?
Yeah. I've got my mom Joanna here and my dad Edward here.
As most of you know, when we swear one of our firefighters, and we just want to remind everybody the dedication and time it takes to commit to this job. Evan has been a wonderful asset in, you know, his short time here. He's involved in a great amount of activities. He is here on a constant basis. He is always, always willing to lend a helping hand, and is always very courteous, and just a great employee. And we appreciate, and we appreciate having Evan here, and we want to thank you for letting him be part of our family here in the fire department. If you'd like to have somebody pin you?
Both can come up.
Again, just one of our traditions to formally, after a swearing-in, to formally pin his badge on him. Probationary personnel don't officially get badges. Sometimes we give him one or two for special events, just so they look good, but we are officially giving him his badge tonight, so. Want to go ahead?
So Evan, on behalf of the Village Board and the staff, we want to congratulate you and thank you for serving your community in another capacity. And to mom and dad, thank you for raising such a wonderful young man and allowing us to have the privilege of working with him. And to your department, who is always very supportive of you. And thank you guys for all being here, and it's a, it's a great honor to be associated with all of you. Thank you. Congratulations, Evan. So now we have public participation. Consent agenda, Amanda?
The items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows: A, approval of minutes, Village Board meeting, September 25th, 2018; work session meeting, October 9th, 2018; B, action Cook County intergovernmental agreement; 26th Street paving; motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement between Cook County and the Village of La Grange Park, and authorize the Village President to sign the IGA; C, action Development Advisory Services; motion to authorize the Village Manager to enter into a contract with S.B. Friedman Development Advisors to provide development consulting services for the former Pancake House property in an amount not to exceed $36,000; D, action motion to authorize the President and Chairperson of the Finance Committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the Treasurer and the Village Clerk to sign checks in the payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers; E, action motion to authorize the Village Treasurer and Village Clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and November 27th, 2018, with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting to be held on November 27th, 2018.
Motion to approve the report as presented?
Second.
Motion second. Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Amanda. Next is Village Manager's report, Julia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have just one item to report to the Village Board this evening, and to do that, I'm going to go up to the front. Mr. President, maybe you could join me up front. It's regarding a new Village designation. How is this working? Can you hear me? Yes? So recently, in the mail, we received a designation. Two large signs that came to us in the mail from the U.S. EPA. These are signs to be placed in our community. It says, "Welcome to a green power community," states that we exceed the EPA guidelines for buying clean renewable energy. This is issued by the EPA Green Power Partnership. This is a designation that the Village was able to achieve due to its recent purchase of electricity supply as part of its municipal aggregation program that is backed by 100% green renewable energy certificates. So this is exciting, and congratulations to the Board for achieving this designation. Congratulations to the Sustainability Commission. I'm Brendan, who serves as the staff liaison. Also, congratulations to the Sustainability Committee, which includes Patty Raco, its chair. Congratulations to the Village President and the Village Board, and to the community.
Love you guys.
And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Julia, and kudos to everybody that Julia has mentioned. This is a great honor for our community to take initiative, to move forward, and actually separate ourselves from other communities, that we are, we are leaders in this capacity. And when we get to my report, there's another project that we've, we've come up with, that we're almost finished with, that has separated us, and shows the hard work that our community and our village staff has, has done to, again, let us stand out as a village. But thank you, Julia. Administration Committee, Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I have a few items to report on to the community. First is regarding the upcoming Halloween. Our Village would like to remind their residents that Halloween in La Grange Park is celebrated on Wednesday, October 31st, with trick-or-treat hours from 3:00 PM until 8:00 PM. The Village encourages residents to exercise extra caution on Halloween evening while having fun. Young children should be accompanied by an adult or an older responsible child. All children should walk from house to house and use the sidewalk when available. Children should be cautioned against running out from between parked cars or across lawns where ornaments or furniture present, presents dangers. Drivers are reminded to use extra caution while traveling throughout our neighborhoods. Second item is regarding the haunted trolley trick-or-treat event. On Friday, October 26th, this Friday, the La Grange Park Chamber of Commerce will be sponsoring its annual haunted trolley trick-or-treat event. This free event will be held from 4:00 PM until 6:30 PM. Parents and children are invited to hop on a trolley at one of several locations, including the La Grange Park Community Park District Facility, the Village Market, and locations along 31st Street. The trolleys will travel along a designated route, dropping patrons at specified stops so that children can trick-or-treat amongst the various businesses. And the last item is regarding our upcoming State of the Village address. Our Village will host the ninth annual State of the Village address at Village Hall on Thursday, November 1st, at 7:00 PM. All residents are encouraged and invited to attend this free event. Village President Jim Disipio and Village staff will provide an overview of the Village's budget, infrastructure projects underway, and progress on special efforts such as commercial revitalization. The Community Park District and Library District will also provide information on their current initiatives. For those who are unable to attend, a second State of the Village address will be held on Friday, November 2nd, at 1:00 PM at Plymouth Place. And that concludes my report from the administration area this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. Building and Zora, community trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to report the building department activities for September of 2018. 116 building permits were issued in September compared to 98 last September. 817 permits have been issued through this September compared to 724 the end of September 2017. Estimated construction costs for the month were slightly less compared to last September, although permit fees collected for the month were over $51,000, which is up 17%. 113 inspections were conducted this September compared to 137 last September. Nine, sorry, only one was not approved. Two permits for new single-family homes were issued during the month. Permits were issued for the masonry repairs at Jiffy Lube and Murphy's Transmission. Both had damage to the exterior facade from vehicle collisions. Following the Board approval, the Village is using Safe Belt for property maintenance code enforcement. The new code enforcement officer is Jasmine Hernandez, who has been in property maintenance for 14 years and has a great understanding for the work. In most, most cases thus far, she has tried to make personal contact on almost every case, which is a great approach for the Village. The owners of 31st Street Shopping Plaza have submitted a permit to replace and update this exterior facade. Patrick continues to work with the owners on other remaining property maintenance concerns and violations, but good amount of progress has been made. They also recently submitted a new plan and proposal for replacing the fence at the rear of the property. On Monday, September 24th, in the afternoon, fire units responded to Posto 31 for an activated fire alarm and discovered a portion of the kitchen ceiling had come down, activating the fire sprinkler and alarm system. Our building officials worked with the owner and his contractors to get the proper repairs done quickly so the restaurant could open that Thursday. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Engineering, Public Works Committee, Trustee Sharon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four items to report on this evening. All landscape restoration has been completed on the Village's 2018 paving program. The contractor, K5 Construction, is addressing items on the punch list as part of the closeout process. This project will be closed out this construction season.
Second, Amanda?
Final documentation for the Harding Avenue resurfacing project continues. Since the agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation, all construction-related matters must follow their procedures. These activities will continue into this winter.
Third, Michael?
Paving work was completed on the Sherwood Road resurfacing project during September. Landscape restoration will be completed by early October. This project is also contracted through the Illinois Department of Transportation and will require a considerable amount of time to generate the required documentation, documentation, and inspection reports. It's final. A reconstruction meeting was held with the contractor for the Village's annual crack filling project, Patriot Pavement and Maintenance. The work is expected to take three days to complete and is scheduled to take place in mid-October. And if I may make a comment, Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you. It's really a pleasure to be able to read this as we come to the end of the construction season, and again, I think a great opportunity to thank staff for all of their hard work in getting the referenda, and most importantly, our residents who voted to pass the referenda to give us this opportunity.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will start with the Police Department summary of activities. Total crimes are similar to last year with 235 reported for the month of September 2018 compared to 232 incidents reported through the same timeframe last year. Police Department total service calls are at 7,463 primarily through September of this year compared to 7,045 from last year. Traffic enforcement for total tickets written through September of 2018 is at 4,800, or 4,383. This is compared to 4,889 from the previous year. The primary difference in the total amount is that last year, the department started the Village sticker enforcement program during the month of September, and this year, it has begun in the month of October. On Saturday, October 27th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the lobby area of La Grange Park Village Hall, the Police Department, in coordination with the Lions Township Drug-Free Coalition and the DEA, will be hosting a drug take-back event. Please be aware that no liquids, needles, or containers with patient-doctor's information will be accepted. All proper medications should be individually placed in a see-through baggie for return. The Adopt-A-Cop program for La Grange Park Schools, K through 8th grades, has begun in the month of October, usually involving a variety of Halloween safety tips. And a community reminder: Always lock your vehicles, houses, and garages when you're not around. Keep valuables properly secured out of sight at all times. In addition, please be aware of any package deliveries which may be left in plain sight, usually on the front porch. You can set up delivery in person, which will need an appropriate signature provided in order for the package to be received. This can be a deterrent for any possible future thefts. And that concludes the Police Department. Now on to Fire Department report. For the month of September, EMS incidents in the month were 123. There have been 1,238 year-to-date compared to 1,277 last year. Fire rescue incidents in the month were 38, and there have been 357 total year-to-date compared to 361 in the prior year. Each of our engine-type apparatus underwent annual pump service testing by Underwriters Laboratories with all noted as opening SAS factory and passing the pump testing criteria. Our personnel, along with personnel from La Grange Fire Department, attended the Ogden Avenue School Back-to-School event. We attended with our new truck and ambulance. Personnel attended the September 11th Remembrance Ceremony at the Riverside Fire Department, along with Patriot's Day Luncheon at Plymouth Place. Personnel also attended a First Responders' Mass and Firefighter's Blessing at St. Louis. Personnel participated in the softball tournament fundraiser in memory of former La Grange Park firefighter resident and Hinsdale Deputy Chief Mark Johnson. Personnel attended the 40th Anniversary Open House at Global Emergency Products in Aurora, where a new ladder truck was on display and showcased as one of the vehicles there. The fire chief attended the articulation breakfast at LTHS and assisted with a lockdown drill. A safety fire presentation was provided to Grace Lutheran preschool children at Fire Station 1. We also provided a presentation to the students in the Citizens Police Academy. And that concludes public safety. Mr. President, there are no action items.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Public Works Committee, Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tree maintenance trimming inspections were performed during 93 regular hours for the month of September. Plastic tubes were put around newly painted trees to protect them from the deer. Brush pickup continued. The first full week in September, crews made multiple passes through town, spending 137 hours and picking up 187 yards of brush. Forty regular hours were spent on the maintenance of Public Works equipment and vehicles. Thirty-seven hours were spent filling potholes and patching water excavations with approximately 11 tons of asphalt being used. Hydrant flushing has continued in the center section and is nearly complete. Street sweeping continued, spending 72 daytime hours. Over that time, 243 mile Village roads were swept, collecting 43 yards of debris. One catch basin was rebuilt. Employees completed a fall planting in front of the Village Hall. DPW re-landscaped the corners of Meadow Crest and 31st Street. Employees attended multiple seminars, including topics of water and sewer practices. 170 day shift hours were spent on buildings and ground, maintenance around the Public Works facility, Village Hall, and along 31st Street. Block party barricades were delivered to requested addresses. Twenty-six hours were spent completing parkway repairs from excavations and removed trees. Work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs, and attending to residents' concerns. Water Department operations, Mr. President. Over 338 day shift hours and 108 overtime man-hours during the month of September were spent on maintenance and repair of sewer and water mains. 33,470,000 gallons of water were purchased from the Brookfield North Riverside Water Commission. 1,333 water meters were read in Section 3. Fifty-five monthly accounts, 17 final meter readings were taken, various inspections, appointments, and service calls were performed. Two water and sewer inspections, five meter appointments, and 25 service calls were performed. Fifteen water bacterial samples were taken. Four UCMR samples were also taken. 126 utility locations were identified prior to excavation. Six water mains were repaired. Four valve boxes were repaired. One service line was repaired, and one water shut-off was performed. Mr. President, that concludes my report for September. I'd like to yield to Village Manager Disipio, Village Manager Julius Adio for the reminder on the downspout disconnection program.
Thank you, Trustee Sheehan. Julia?
Sure. So I wanted to make sure, thank you for the reminder from the dais. It's certainly appreciated, but I wanted to make sure that folks were aware that we are approaching the deadline for the downspout disconnection reimbursement program. This is a very important program that the Village has rolled out to the residents in town with help from a grant from the Illinois EPA for reimbursement dollars related to the disconnection of downspouts for simple and complex disconnection of the downspouts from the combined sewer system. So we have a program in place to get folks compliant. It is the law to disconnect your downspouts from the combined sewer system. All homes, regardless of whether they're undergoing sale, will have to be disconnected by January 1 of 2019. We had this program put in place with the support of the IEPA in order to offset some of the, and mitigate some of the costs associated with getting into compliance for this program, and those funds will come to a close on Halloween. So on October 31st, just a few days left of this program, we encourage folks to get their work done, get their applications completed, get them filled out, and drop them off at Village Hall, and get them in by Halloween. If you have any questions about this program, questions about filling out the form, anything at all, you need some assistance, please call the Village Hall. Forrest Tucker, Forrest Tucker is our program coordinator for this project. He's here to answer the questions that our residents have. He makes himself available for home visits, but we are getting very close to the end. He's very busy, so I encourage folks to call Village Hall and ask for Forrest Tucker, and he can help folks out. Right now, we are processing quite a few applications every day, so we're quite busy. Nonetheless, we want to make sure we are availing ourselves to our residents to make the most out of these funds that are available to us. And with that, that's all I have to report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julia. And again, thank you, Trustee Sheehan.
Mr. President?
Public Works Committee, Trustee Raco?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are five months of 42% of the fiscal year 2019. To date, general fund revenue is at 47% of the annual budget and about $343,000 higher than the prior year. Property tax revenue is $70,000 greater than last year, due in part to refunds in the prior year. Sales receipts are about 5% higher than last year, while telecommunications taxes are down by 8%. Permit revenue is up over 11% compared to last year. Intergovernmental revenue is up about 6.6% compared to last year. Income tax receipts are 5% higher than last year, likely due to the state's cut to the LGDF moving from 10% to 5% with the state's new budget. Charges for services are down about $16,000 due to lower ambulance receipts. Fine revenue is up 31% compared to last year due to a large court fine payment and local debt recovery program receipts. Miscellaneous revenue is higher due primarily to the increase in the tower lease fees and NetWest radio system member reimbursements. The NetWest expenditures and reimbursements were previously included in the emergency telephone system fund. With the transition of the 911 services to LTAC, New West is now included in the general fund. Total general fund expenditures are within expectations at 40% of the annual budget and about $77,000 higher, or 2.2% higher than last year. And then there's one action item, Mr. President, and it's the 2018 property tax levy estimate. We're here to approve the estimate of the 2018 Village property tax levy as required by the truth and taxation law. Truth and taxation law requires that the Village Board estimate the amount of property taxes to be levied at least 20 days prior to the adoption of the annual tax levy. The Village's 28 tax levy ordinance will be reviewed at the November 13th work session and then placed on the agenda for Board approval at the November 27th meeting. The State of Illinois Property Extension Limitation Law, PTEL, limits the amount the Village may increase the aggregate levy each year to the lesser 5% or the change of the Consumer Price Index. The term aggregate levy is specifically defined in the truth and taxation law to include the corporate and special levies and excludes levies for debt services. For the 2018 levy, the PTEL CPI change is 2.1%, and therefore is the limiting factor. PTEL allows for the Village to collect additional taxes on new property value. Over the past 10 years, the value of the new property has ranged between 0.04% and 0.64% of the Village's total equalized assessed value. We will not know the actual amount of the new value until well after the Village's tax levy ordinance is due to the county. Therefore, an estimate of 2% of the EVA has been incorporated into levy estimate calculation to ensure all potential new value is included. The county will reduce the Village's actual extension to the amount allowed under PTEL. The Village Board reviewed the 2018 levy estimate on the October 9th work session. The proposed estimated aggregate levy for 2018 is $3,715,500 and $511,000. Yes, we do this every year. It's required, and it's been laid out clearly, so we need to do it.
Any comments from the Board? Seeing none, Amanda, take the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report and all action items, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rocco. Commercial Revitalization Committee, trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items to report on this evening. The Commercial Revitalization Committee, CRC, met on October 1st at Panera to complete a field evaluation of the Village Market Business District. The CRC also met on October 3rd to complete a field evaluation of the North LaGrange Road 31st Street Business District. Collectively, the committee identified several items to be addressed immediately, cleanup items in closing, code enforcement, and other longer-term improvements such as enhanced right-of-way landscaping, sun improvement, alleyway improvements, et cetera. Second item, the staff is continuing negotiations with the owner of 1201 Barnesdale LLC for redevelopment agreement that would provide financial incentives for the redevelopment of the property through the 31st Street Barnesdale Tax Increment and Financing and Business Districts. That concludes my report this evening, Mr. President. One small comment, as it's very good to see people coming in our village or people in our village looking to invest in it.
Thank you, trustee Casera. Other reports, village clerk?
I have nothing to report, Mr. President.
Our village treasurer?
No report, Mr. President.
Village engineer?
No report, Mr. President.
Our village attorney?
No report, Mr. President.
Motion to approve Committee and Collectors' reports is presented.
Second.
Motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have a couple items. Julie had mentioned the IGIG grant coming to a close. If everybody remembers, a long time ago, it was the Engineering Capital Projects Committee that was placed with the task of coming up with flood mitigation program, which the Board ultimately approved. This is one of the results of that report and of the Board's initiative to improve and work on flooding in our community. As far as I know, we're one of the few, if not the only, community in the area that has adopted this policy and has moved forward with this grant. I just want to give thanks to Emily and Julia and the staff for the amount of work that was put into this to get the grant approved, and then to enforce it and provide the program to our residents. While it was not, you know, unanimously accepted all the time, I think we're going to see the benefits down the road, and we're going to see a reduction in flooding in our community, maybe not as a result of only this project, but certainly a contribution thereof. So thank you, and kudos to you for, again, as I mentioned earlier, setting us above and beyond other communities in our area. Emily is doing a massive amount of work lately on the Village State of the Village address, so I want to thank you, Emily. I know it's coming up quick, and it's a big task, and I know it's going to be a great presentation. I was unable to make the open house, but Chief Magus, I understand it was a huge success. Thank you for putting that out to our community, and I heard nothing but great comments about the professionalism and the amount of activities that were presented, so thank you. Public participation of non-agenda-related items. Still nothing. Okay. Are you guys here just to see what we're doing?
I guess we have an assignment to class.
Beautiful.
And I'm attached.
Thank you for being in our audience. Okay, any new business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I move that we move into executive session for the purpose to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, 5 ILCS 120/2 C1. Not to return to open session until our next scheduled work session meeting, November 13th, 2018, at 7:30.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
[inaudible]